Good morning and welcome to the April 26th Special Session of the County Board of Commissioners. Join me in the Pledge to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we come to the point of the meeting that we ask for public comments. If anybody wants to address the board, we're limited to five minutes, and welcome.
My name is Karen Johnson Lightner, 1573538 St., Mayor, Minnesota. And if you've never been up in this podium, when that red light is on constantly, that's when they're recording, is that correct, or when it's blinking? The camera, or whatever that is?
When the light is on.
Okay, anyways, what I'm gonna say is jokingly, I'll call it Carver Gate, not really, but when I was viewing the Carver County Commissioners Meeting, not last week, but two weeks ago, and you usually can just pull them up and watch the video. Well, this video did not start with the pledge allegiance with the two people, myself and Nick, who came up about conditional use permits. It started 18 minutes in, and it was Mark Metz, our Carver County Attorney. So I sent an email, and I alerted everyone on this email, and I basically said I think I was gonna check back at noon. Well, I checked back probably at 1:00, and at that point, I pretty much put it in the idea of the rooster crowing three times. So the video wasn't up, but I was watching the... It got cut off when a vote was being done for the Watertown Township Solar Conditional Use Permit. Just kinda weird. So anyways, what ended up happening was I found out on Friday, when it got pulled up, an hour was dropped off, 18 minutes from the first part, and then the rest, when it would've been Jason, I think his name is, he came up here about the conditional use permit. And so I just, I don't think I should be the one watching this stuff. And I know Colin, it seems like he's not here anymore, and I really enjoyed that fact. I don't know, nobody got back to me what happened, gave him zee. So anyways, what I'm saying is, I have for 22 years dealt with how things kind of go wrong, and how nothing gets explained. So I call it the lawyers, liars, and lobbyists. So what I'm just saying to you is, we need to really not have what's going back to the conditional use permit that John Linder got by a hardship. Gail Degler was part of it into anything. When Dave Linder talked about his dad making $17 million, I'm gonna bring up again, $18,800,000 made a, was created a new emergency, a new emergency at the Ridgeville Hospital. A whole emergency, brand-new building, $18,800,000. That family got $17 million off of a conditional use permit. I'll wrap it up saying, you're not gonna hurt my friend Sam Cook anymore. You're not gonna mess with the black community because of the fact this was a scam. I want by May 3rd some reaction back to what I'm doing. I want the Carver County Commissioner to pay attention, because I've got the pattern now from the beginning of 22 years ago, and how things have followed up now. If you don't show up at the Planning Commission Meetings, you really aren't actually listening to the public, because conditional use permits ruin people's lives.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else wanna address the board this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Item number two, the Agenda Review and Adoption. And this morning, we have an Agenda Amendment 5.2, Amendment 2, the original 5.2, and now we have, like I say, an amendment to it. So with that, is there a motion?
With that change, I'd move approval, sir.
Second, Uterman.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Uterman, to approve the Agenda as amended. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Carrie for making these changes. The reason for the change was, there was two classifications in stock that were below $15 in the minimum, and I don't think $15 is a livable wage, but I think it pushes us past there. And then a quick study was done, I think in the last two years. We haven't had any employee that's worked for the county that's worked 500 or more hours that's fallen below that, but this is more or less a technicality to push it in those regards. So thanks, Carrie, for making those changes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number three, the approval of the minutes for the April 19th regular session.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Uterman, second by Commissioner Fahy, to move approval of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Community announcements. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just wanted to say thank you for the yellow ribbon event in NYA last Saturday. Commissioner Degler and I were able to attend, and the guest speakers and the presentations were very, very good, and just a thank you to all who have served and continue to protect this great country. Couple events coming up. The Carver Lions Pork Chop Dinner this Friday at City Hall from 4:00 to 8:00, and then the Cologne Fire Department Steak Fry at the Fire Hall this Saturday from 3:00 to 8:00. And then, as we all know, it's County Government Appreciation Day. So thank you to everyone for their dedication and hard work in making Carver County the best county in the state. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Other announcements. Commissioner Lynch.
I would like to point out that I did stop at the Waconia Fireman's Breakfast on Sunday, and it was absolutely the best one ever. They had almost 1,000 people there, it was really, really well attended. They had pancakes, French toast, and sausage, it was really, really good. Anyway, I'd just remind everyone for the Saturday, we have the, the Waconia Lions have the Wild Game Dinner, and that's gonna be at the Fairgrounds this year for the first time, so get tickets if they still are available.
Well said. Other commission, community announcements. Commissioner Uterman.
Mr. Chair, one, I just wanna make a quick comment. Apologies that we didn't get back to the gal that just spoke, but there was a technology glitch. I just wanna be on the record, it was unintended, but the video's still out there, and so it was fixed. We have made some changes, so we've done better there. A couple announcements. One, I often talk a lot about sports in the area, but our semifinalist robotics team out of Chaska High School got a chance to go to Houston. It's really cool to see some of the social media posts, some of the individuals that were down there, but also recognize the sacrifices that the parents and community has made to get the funding to be down there. It's super expensive to get down there, but they performed well, and they represented super well. So congratulations to that team, the parents, and all the people that have helped get them down that path. Robotics is not going away, and we see it manifest itself in Carver County in big ways.
As I heard, I think they were in the semifinals.
Yep, yep, they did not advance, but they were semifinalists, so that's fantastic. I was honored to be able to speak to 80 NHS folks at Holy Family and their families. I think there's about 300 of them. They have some of the same values that we have in Carver County, character service and community. So getting a chance to talk to sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and maybe offer a little bit of wisdom, I guess, but also to promote Carver County and invite those folks to consider Carver County Government as a pathway. I didn't wanna go without note that Clarence Kelsar, at age 98, passed away. The Kelsar family has been a staple in our community for over 150 years, and our farming roots, and our teaching roots, so he'll be missed within the community. A lot of great contributions for him and his family, and they continue to do so. You see the name around town on lakes and roads and whatnot, and just wanted to make sure that we mentioned him and his family. We're in the midst of dock season, so I had a chance to be at Lake Waconia. It was much warmer this time. Last time I was on Lake Waconia, I was doing polar plunge with the Sheriff's Office, but it was interesting, 'cause the guy that we were helping put in a dock, he pulled out a poster from the 1960 election season. It was Jerry Haskin, apparently he served 22 years as District 5 Commissioner. So that's super cool. It's also a reminder that we occupied these seats for a pretty short time, and will be forgotten years and generations later. I did not know Jerry, so it's just a humbling reminder that we're just here for a short time, filling the space. And then finally, it's more than Administrative Professionals Day tomorrow, and it doesn't just do it justice, but Diane keeps us organized and on schedule. She gives us input and feedback, and we appreciate what you do for the county, Diane. So with that, thank you.
You mentioned two families, very staple in the community, the Kelsars and the Haskins, very much so. Any other community announcements? If not, I just wanted to mention there's going to be an open house at the Cologne Community Center, May 3rd. Again, we're talking about Public Works and the 212 Project. It's moving along, and so if you want an update, come to the Community Center. Also, there's lighting projects. You might notice some posts or some stakes, and they will be putting in some new lighting poles around the county. We have a safety grant that enhances the lighting on certain intersections. So if you see that, you know a little bit what's coming up. And just to piggyback on what Commissioner Fahy mentioned, this is National County Government Month. I want to thank all the employees and anybody that has something to do with county government. We're closer to the people than the people in Washington and St. Paul. So if you have any concerns, don't hesitate to contact any one of us. With that, we'll move along with the consent agenda. There's only three items on the consent agenda this morning. The first one has to do with Juvenile Placement Services. The second one has to do with the approval of the updated STOC Wage Scale. And the third one is our Health and Human Services and Commissioner Warrants. With that, is there anything that should be pulled from the consent? Is there a motion to accept the consent as presented?
So moved, Uterman.
Motion by Commissioner Uterman, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lynch. Discussion, Commissioner Fahy.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just to comment on the STOC and just how critical that is for our seasonal temporary and on-call positions. It's great to see those changes made, and just how valuable they play the role within our workforce.
Real good. Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, settlement agreements for right-of-way acquisition along Highway 24 project. This is a continuation of a project that we've discussed a number of times. We have one Commissioner that will be abstaining because of a potential conflict of interest. Mr. Patrick Lambert, our Senior Right-of-Way Agent, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This particular settlement actually matches the last written offer that you had directed our staff to this property owner, and they accepted. It just took a little longer to get it going, because they were somewhere warm for two months, and just got back, so...
How could that possibly be?
Can't understand it either.
Any questions for Mr. Lambrecht?
I'd move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, is there a second?
Second, Uterman.
Second by Commissioner Uterman. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and one abstention. Commissioner Lynch. Thank you, Patrick. Continue with the project. With that, it brings us to item 7.1, 2022, the Redistricting Plan. We'll turn it over to Kendra if she wants to kick it off. She's our Election and Licensing Manager. Welcome, Kendra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, and it's nice to see everybody here again this morning. We're going to continue our public hearing for the 2022 redistricting process, continuing that from last Tuesday's meeting.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lynch.
Do we need a motion to reconvene the redistricting public hearing?
That would be appropriate.
I also move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fahy to reconvene the public hearing that was continued on the April 19th meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for reminding me to reconvene it.
No problem, sir.
Back to Kendra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to refresh everyone's memory from the calendar of the redistricting process, we've been through this a few times in previous meetings. So just to catch everyone up, that everything checked off and highlighted there has taken place, and we are now on today's continuation of the public hearing from last Tuesday. Today is our deadline for the County Board to approve a 2022 redistricting plan, to pass a resolution to also determine the two- and four-year terms for those Commissioner Districts, and then also to approve a 2022 Soil and Water Plan. And then following that, we will publish publicly the new congressional legislative and county-commissioner district boundaries for Carver County residents. In our steps for this morning, as we said, we've had our motion to reconvene. After my presentation, there'll be an opportunity for public input. There'll be a motion to close the public hearing. We will take direction from the Board as far as findings of facts and resolutions for those three resolutions that I've mentioned. We'll recess and prepare those resolutions, reconvene, and then have the adoptions of those resolutions at the end of the meeting. Just to summarize briefly, we've used our current Commissioner Districts as a baseline. We did talk previously about Districts 1 and 5 being on the 2022 ballot. We'll touch on that more. Districts 2 and 4 are on the ballot because of the four-year terms ending. We do have some district option limitations that we've discussed that I'll touch in a bit more detail. We have Option A, then B, C, and E. Option A, we do not have three districts within 10%. Options B, C, and E. We do have a new Option E that has been proposed by Commissioner Uterman, that we'll talk about a little bit later, than Option D that was presented by the public. And just to remind everyone of our redistricting statutory guidelines, the principles that are to be followed in our redistricting process. Each county is divided into as many districts as there are commissioners. They have to be bounded by the new municipal precinct lines and boundaries. They need to be composed of contiguous territory as regular and compact as practicable, depending upon our geography, and as nearly equal in population as possible. There's a population variance calculation where we're looking to get as close to the average for each district as possible. We will add the differences from average from each district to come up with a population variance total for each option that you're considering today, for you to factor into the principles. The other principle is that no district shall vary in population by more than 10% from the average. So there's a 10% population range you'll see on each of the options. And we are not allowed to solve that 10% goal by splitting a voting precinct, so that is not allowed by statute. So again, that does limit some of our options. And then also the test of the majority of the least populous districts not containing less than, not less than a majority of the population. All of our options do meet that particular statutory test. So just to remind everyone, this was the ending point, the result of the 2012 County Commissioner Redistricting Process, with the various precinct boundaries you see there, and also with the, how they factored compared to the 10% range goal at that time. And at that time, we did have District 4 that was not able to be brought within the 10%. And just to refresh everyone's memory, this is just, one of the factors is the population changes and the difference in those across the municipalities. Everything highlighted in green had large increases in population, and the two in yellow had more significant decreases. And then the other factor being, that we've talked about before, the simultaneous municipal precinct boundary changes that took place in four of our cities. Chanhasen, Chaska, Victoria, Waconia, all chose to make significant redistricting precinct boundary changes. So everything in blue is new boundaries and associated populations. And so those new simultaneous changes did have to be factored into our redistricting at the county level. The other significant factor that I briefly referred to before was the contiguity. We have a significant issue this redistricting process with a Waconia marriage requirement. By statute, we do need to marry or lock together by law. Any annexations that cause us to need to create contiguous boundaries. Previous to this 2022 redistricting process, we did have several across the county. They had a minor impact. However, in 2019, we did have, if you remember, the city of Waconia annexing property from Lake Town Township, and that did shift a large population, just under 2,000, from District 5 to District 4. We'll show it to you here in the next couple of slides, but it did create a large, what we call a Waconia marriage, in the middle of the county, with a population number that is almost at our low range for the 10% range goal. So that large population pieced together that has to be assigned to the same Commissioner District in the middle of the county with that large population did limit our redistricting options in this cycle. And then just to show you, this is the new Waconia annexation of Lake Town Township, and this is the piece here, this little orange octagon or hexagon, whatever you would call that, sorry, is Lake Town Township, and it is within the city of Waconia. We already had a marriage between city of mayor, which is married to Waconia Township because of this island of Waconia Township within the city limits of mayor. We also have this yellow here that is Waconia Township, which marries the city of Waconia to the portions to the west, to the northwest. And this island of Lake Town Township within city of Waconia then locks in or marries Lake Town Township to this other geographic piece. And then the final piece is this new Victoria Precinct 5 in the southeast portion of Lake Town Township. That is, as you can see, wholly contained within Lake Town Township, so Victoria Precinct 5 also is part of this marriage. So everything that I just walked through has to be assigned to the same Commissioner District. And again, the significant piece is the factor that we have both Waconia Township and Lake Town Township within the same portion of Waconia, and that's what locks in or marries these together. So that does factor into the options you're seeing this morning. So Option A is basically the end result of the Commissioner District Boundaries. If we are honoring this large marriage that we just walked through in the middle of the county, and then also adjusting the County Commissioner District Boundaries for the new municipal precinct boundaries that were done in the previous part of the process. And at that starting point, this is Option A, we will revisit this shortly when we talk about the options. The impact from Waconia marriage, again, it does create an overall compactness, but we do have Districts 2, 4, and 5 not within the 10% population range. There aren't any options that are gonna get Districts 4 and 5 within that 10% population range. Options B, C, and E, which you will see do get the majority, or do get the three of our precinct, districts within the 10%, and it does honor all marriages. But again, we do have Districts 2 and 4 for Commissioner Districts that are on the ballot this year because of their terms being up. The movement of larger than the 5% threshold of Lake Town Township moving from District 5 to District 4 does put District 5 on the ballot in 2022. The impact from the city boundary changes. There was a shifting of more than 2,300 in population between Commissioner Districts 1 and 2 because of the Chanhasen boundary changes, and because of that, that puts District 1 on the ballot in 2022. And Chaska boundary changes between its wards. It shifted less than 600, so the municipal boundary changes do not, at this point, put District 3 on the ballot for 2022. And we're just highlighting here, this is the municipal boundary. The line in red is the pre-existing Commissioner District Boundaries between 1 and 2, and the dotted lines are the new municipal precinct boundaries, and those shifting. Again, to summarize, we do have three options that does, that do put District 2 within the 10% population range without splitting a voting precinct. Option B is going to shift Victoria Precinct 3, from District 3 to District 2. Option C shifts Precinct, Victoria Precinct 2, from District 3 to District 2. And Option E, which is, again, the new option being proposed by Commissioner Uterman, does take Option B, but then it also shifts Hollywood Township from District 4 to District 5. And we'll talk about the impacts for each of those options shortly. Again, revisiting Option A, this is from the annexation in Waconia, and the municipal boundary changes, and no further changes. It is the most compact. Again, the population variance that we're showing you there, we're adding all of the differences from average for each of the resulting districts, and coming up with that total population variance number for the average as equal in population as possible. But then also showing you that in Option A, three of the five districts do not fall within that 10% population range. Option B would then again be moving to Victoria Precinct 3, which you see circled in purple there, and its associated population from District 3 to District 2. It does make District 2 somewhat less compact. You can see the resulting population variance number there, but it gets three of our five districts within the 10% and leaves two outside of that range. And again, 4 and 5 are the two outside of the range. And again, Four and Five are the two outside of the range that are not able to get within 10% for the other factors I mentioned. Option C is similar. It moves a different precinct from Victoria, so Victoria Precinct Two, and its population is moving from District Three again to District Two. And it does make District Three somewhat less compact and contiguous. You can see the resulting total population variance number there with this option. And similar to option B, it does get three of our five districts within the 10% range goal. We did have an option D that was proposed from the public, and I'll show you that on the next slide, what it actually looks like. We are sharing with all of you, but it does not meet a couple of the statutory requirements. It does not honor the marriage and the contiguity factor for annexations, and it does not meet the statutory requirement for the commissioner district boundaries to follow the municipal precinct boundary lines. This is what it looked like. And again, as you can see, based on the Maconia marriage that I mentioned earlier, Lake Town Township, Victoria Precinct Five, which isn't showing here, but it's right in this area, and the city of Maconia have to be assigned to the same commissioner district as Maconia Township and City of Mayor. So it does not meet the contiguity requirement. And then also, a little less obvious here, the boundaries between commissioner district Two and Three in this area does not follow a municipal precinct line in Victoria. It takes a different path across one of the precincts. And then also over here on the southeast portion between Districts One and Two, it does not follow municipal precinct boundary lines that Chanhasan drew. So for those reasons, this does not meet statutory requirements. We don't have the population numbers to share with you of what they were landed on with this particular plan option because they didn't follow municipal precinct boundaries and the associated population numbers. But we did want to share it with you this morning. And then option E, this is the option that we have for you this morning as well. It starts with option B, as I mentioned earlier. It moves the same Victoria Precinct Three from commissioner district Three to commissioner district Two, but in addition, it moves Hollywood Township into District Five. There are a couple of districts then that are less compact. You can see the population variance number there and that impact. And just like options B and C, this does get three of our five commissioner districts within the 10% range. Another item that you'll be taking action on this morning that is new for this redistricting process due to a statute change, you are also required this morning to pass a resolution to adopt new soil and water district boundaries. It's in consultation with the Soil and Water Board. They did at their April 24th, 21st meeting, pass a resolution to make a recommendation for how they propose the lines be drawn. It does start with the option B that we showed you previously, and it does switch precincts Four and Five in Chanhasan between districts One and Two as opposed to option B. I'll show you the map here. They are, again, as you can see, it does cause districts One and Two to be slightly less compact. It's this area right in this circle here. It does get three of the districts within the population goal of 10%, but they are stating that it allows for better watershed representation between districts One and Two. And it is allowed by law for the soil and water boundaries to be different from the county commissioner district boundaries that you're going to be drawing. And just a reminder of our steps here this morning. Shortly, we'll be closing the public hearing, and after public input and discussion, you as a county board will select a 2022 redistricting plan, explaining your reasons for choosing that plan so that we can incorporate that into the resolution language. You will also pass a resolution to determine the staggered terms for which commissioner districts will be a two-year term on the 2022 ballot and which will be a four-year term. And then again, that additional resolution, selecting a soil and water redistricting plan, again, explaining your reasons for choosing that plan. We will recess and reconvene so that we can prepare those resolutions and get everything ready for you to actually have resolutions and findings of fact. At this time, I believe we're ready for the public input portion.
Since this is a public hearing, we're still open. Anybody from the public have any thoughts on the plans that were presented last week and now this week? Any suggestions, any input that you would like? Please come up and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Rudolph. I'm from Harper, Minnesota. What, what was the option D? Was that the one that, that synchronized the soil and water? Or is that a different?
Kendra, if you want to explain.
The plan.
Option D was the county commissioner district boundaries that was proposed from the public.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Soil and Water is actually labeled soil SWCD.
Those are the last ones.
The last one.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess I would, I would say that as public, I don't feel a strong need to make the soil and water districts match the county commissioner, and I would probably defer to them for their input on the watershed boundary, right? Obviously, that, that makes sense to me if, if the creek is generally, you know, or whatever, the flood plain, that, that makes sense. So I guess I, I'd feel comfortable as the public representative here, if, if the commission decided to, to have the two diverge, right, the soil and water and county, it seems logical to me. So that was it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else from the public want to say a few words? Welcome, Sarah.
Good morning.
Are you speaking as a private citizen or are you speaking on behalf of the CDA?
Good morning. My name is Sarah Carlson. I live in Chaska, Minnesota, 1960 Mabel Court. I'm here this morning because, A, I wanted to hear about your thoughts for redistricting. I am not here as your appointed representative to the Carver County CDA. However, in one of the other hats that I wear, as you may recall, I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County, and I wanted to thank each of you for having this process being transparent and open to public participation. I look forward to seeing all of you again somewhere along the, this process, including candidate forums that will no doubt become possible later this summer. But again, I just wanted to say thank you for making this process transparent and open, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts and where we go from here. Again, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Those are kind words, and the board appreciates him. Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to address the board? Seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Workman to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Oh, it's second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We're now part of the, the public hearing is now closed. And I think we'll kick it off with Commissioner Udoman. Excuse me. You had some thoughts that you presented. You want to explain your ideas?
Sure, yeah. I think the first would be maybe a question for Dave and Kendra is, this is always an awkward thing when you get to vote on your own pay or you get to vote on districts that impact what you represent. So I'm guessing the answer is no, but will you be recommending one of these four for us to consider? Or are we going to, are we going to choose between the four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Udoman. We do not make recommendations. We only present the factual information and, and the information, and it is for you as the board to make the determination and your judgment as which is the best plan for Carver County going forward.
Got it. Thank you.
The last open session, we talked about the six different rules. I think Attorney Metz offered a memo to talk about the six different pieces. And I like to be as objective as I can, and I'm a math dork. So I put all the inputs into a spreadsheet, and to me, it kicked out whatever those weightings were. If it was an equal weighting, it actually shoved it the way I did it anyway. To Plan A would be the best. If it was equally weighted, Plan A was the best if you had, if you favored the most compact. But I think in the last meeting, it was the will of the board to maybe shift weighting if all things were equal to population. And I also know that the marriage and all the words that go along with that produce a finite amount of puzzle pieces. So I took, read yours, I saw the input by option D, which wasn't viable, and others. And if you weighed it from a population perspective, I pushed around those finite puzzle pieces, and I came to a solution that is actually the best when it comes to population. It puts two commissioner districts outside of the plus or minus 10%, but it's the closest to the pin when it comes to the absolute delta, does each having a fifth of population. And so as I look through that and the matrix, I would, I would, for simplicity in my mind, toss out C because it's the least continuous and probably the hardest to defend in my estimation. I would look at option A if we were to favor the most compact, and I think it was the words of Kendra, it's the most compact option that we have. But if we favor the, the most, the best population, that would be Plan E. And so my matrix suggested that two of the three iterations of that matrix equal weighting and then also weighting favoring compact, compactness, sorry, equally weighting, all the six criteria. And then also, the most continuous, it would be Plan A. If it was based on population, it would favor Plan E. And then I did one more filter, and the last one was is Plan A would have the appearance to benefit District Three, which I represent, because I would not be on the ballot. So because of that, I'm not supporting A, I'm supporting Plan E. And then to not break, break open meeting rule, I printed off how I arrived at where I got. So I'll distribute this to anybody that wants to see it.
Okay, just.
Mr. Chair. I'll take those copies and hand them around.
Okay, sounds good.
And County Attorney Metz kind of laid out some of the criteria that the statutes recommend how you do this. And I think that's kind of the problem, situation, whatever word you want to use that we're in. There's no, no plan that's presented or that's viable or that's even available that fits all the criteria. I think County Attorney Metz, correct me if I misinterpret what you said, there's no real ranking order, which one places a higher priority for state regulations. Is it population? Is it concisment? Is it contiguous? But that's, we have to have some rationale as to what, why we choose what we choose. And with the situation we're in, we're not going to find a perfect plan that meets all the criteria, but we have to have reasons to support what we come up with. Is that pretty much mushed it up?
Mr. Chairman and board members, it's correct that this board has to balance all the different factors. There's other factors too, in terms of having districts that represent, say, for example, communities of interest, right? That could be a consideration, that you have farmers, you have urban areas. The compactness, if you have a commissioner that's representing one area that is to the corner of the county to the other corner, consideration. So there are other considerations you can have, but statutory construction is that you're supposed to balance those five factors. But what's important is, the statute makes clear, and it says in 375.025 subdivision one, it requires that the districts be as nearly equal in population as possible. And to be as nearly equal in population as possible, that's different in a separate factor from the population deviation when you're devising your redistricting plan, right? So it's also important to know that when you're considering this nearly equal in population as possible, it doesn't require mathematical equality. So in the county staff, in trying to be transparent and open and provide guidance but not tell the board what to do, they develop a number of plans or options, we should say, and we were unable to come up with any options that were perfect, that met all these qualifications within the 10%, a nice compactness, contiguity, that representation. So we presented these different options, others have presented them, and so you're right, Commissioner Begler and the board, that you are to consider all those factors and requirements and make your best determination using your due diligence. And really, it's important to explain why you've chosen a certain option and why you've rejected other options. So I know it's a little longer, but I think it's important to put that out there because you have this discussion now because they have the open meeting laws. So you can't have backdoor channels, which, you know, the board has not done, and had conversations with, with each other to say, well, what are you going to do? So this is the time to have that conversation. And as Commissioner Udoman indicated, you know, presenting this for the first time, it does put the board in a position where now you have to have this discussion and evaluate. Thanks.
Just kind of a goofy question, you might say, but I've always told my kids, there's no such thing as a bad question, just one that hasn't been asked. If by chance this board, for some odd reason, is deadlock, cannot come up with a recommended plan, what happens?
Well, Mr. Chairman and.
I don't see that happening, but I just wanted to throw it out.
I don't have an answer for you right here, so I'm going to be honest with you, I guess, and that's something we would take a recess with and we would determine how, how that is made at that point, because, yeah, that's a good question, I guess, with something we hadn't really considered if there's a deadlock.
Other thoughts, Commissioner Workman?
All good, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm, you know, when you push down on one thing, then the other thing pops out. I'm, I guess I consider myself a little bit indifferent about any of the plans. I think they're all acceptable and so I'm waiting to hear, hear the debate. If there, if there is going to be any, I don't know where we start the debate on, you know, the preference and the statistics that Commissioner Udoman presented or, or just based on the population. So I think Kendra was gonna, was gonna suggest D, so.
Glad to hear that, so.
I'm taking that right out of hand, but so, you know, I'm kind of indifferent. I, I want it to be fair. The, the D plan and the reason we can't do the D plan severely limits what we can do. And so I'm not, I'm not high on any of them, but I'm not, I don't think any of them are bad. So that was a great comment I've ever made.
That's good. I appreciate that. Commissioner Fay?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, I agree both with Matt and also Tom and just the challenges that are in front of us with. For me, the community of interests play a big part. The compactness plays a big part. Granted, District Five is pretty unique in its nature with the rural aspect and the majority of the townships, et cetera, et cetera. And so I too am just really interested, new to this process and how things happen and how we work through this with more and more of the discussion.
Commissioner Lynch, thoughts?
Well, I'd like to thank someone from the public. I'd like to thank me and Reed and Sarah to come in and actually thank us for being open and transparent. I think that actually means a lot. We get attacked for being just the opposite most of the other times. So I really like to thank you guys for coming in. I would like to, when you look at it, and you, the thing that really threw us for a loop, and we have to follow the, we have to follow the, the laws and the statutes that are set in for, set before us, and we have a couple attorneys in here to make sure we do that, at least we should, at least listen to them. And it's the islands, it's the marriages, and it really threw us for a loop. And it. And it makes it, it makes four and five impossible to, to come up with the population. If you, if you use the population, and the reason I'm, and again, it's very, I liked how Commissioner Workman critiqued himself, but he had a great comment, and that is that when you push on one, the other one pops up. So there's nothing perfect, it's not going to be perfect. We have, you know, you have the islands, you have the marriages, you can't split a voting precinct, need to be contiguous, compact as possible. And, you know, we've listened to our county attorney, could he defend it? And he already showed us that none were perfect, and he told us which ones we could. Communities of interest are a big thing for me, because the people of Hollywood and Carver are going to have different needs. And that would be an exceedingly large commissioner district for one commissioner to represent. If you look at the one, two, and three on the east side, if you get a call, you get an email, it's pretty easy to hop in your car and be there in five minutes, whereas in option E, it would be very difficult if you're in the commissioner from District Five, so...
Yeah, very well said. I kind of looked at this, you know, sometimes you arrive at something by going through the back door. And item, Plan D was a no-starter, so get rid of that one. So then you have A, B, A, B, C, and E, A, B, C, and E. We know we're not gonna, no matter what plan we use, we're not going to come up with equal population. So, you know, it's kind of a toss-up there. Which is the better of the worst, or the worst of the best, or whatever? So population did not play in as big a weighing factor in my mind. Community of interest, I concur that that's probably a bigger interest. And this morning, we had, what do you call it, Eastern League, Carver County Leaders Meeting, and Kendra presented basically the same thing that we just heard a few minutes ago. And my question to her at that point is, why did the congressional districts and legislative districts, how were they different than ours? And they followed similarly the same criteria, but yet they have more flexibility because of their larger landmass, because we have some goofy congressional districts, we have some goofy legislative districts. So compactness and conciseness, continuities play somewhat of a part, but that's not, I think the community of interest to me is a larger share that kind of fits in from my perspective. So I kind of got rid of E, and that brought me down to A, B, and C. C was the least of the compactness, so that was between A and B, and I could live with either one of A or B. So I, again, I'm not saying at this point which one, but I could, either one of those two fit my criteria. So I'm back to opening up to more discussion from anybody else. If anybody would like to move one plan or the other, or any of the plans, not, more thoughts?
With that, Mr. Chair, we'll make a motion, we'll see where it goes. I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to prepare findings and facts, resolutions for Plan A.
Is there a second to that plan?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to land on Commissioner District, or Plan A. Any discussion? In order for us to, part of the discussion, I think, should we vote on it first and then come up with the reasons for it, or vote on it first? Right.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that you discuss it, if you want to debate it further, and then vote on, remember, it's a motion to direct staff. And we'd also then want you to take step two, which would be the, to select the staggered term that relates to that option that you're directing staff on. And also, at the same time, you might as well direct staff on the soil and water option, there's one. That would then allow us to take a recess and prepare all three resolutions. But I would suggest you, you continue debate to complete the rec, to make sure you have a very good record of your thoughts and ideas.
Rationale for going with Plan A? I'll start with the person that made the motion, Commissioner Lynch.
Um, was, our county attorney mentioned that it's a corner to corner of the county. If you look at Plan Five, District Five, it would be very difficult for one commissioner to handle that district in my estimation. I believe the, they're, one of the things we're supposed to look at is to be compact as possible. I don't see that as compact. I see the, the people of Carver having different needs of Camden and Hollywood and New Germany. And for that reason, it's not compact, so I eliminated that. That's why Commissioner Udoman's own words, he said Plan A is the most compact.
Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, I agree on those same lines with the compactness and also just the communities of interest that come into play. And then also for me was just honoring all the marriages, that is a key factor with Lake Town Township.
Commissioner Workman?
I, I don't have a comment.
Commissioner Udoman?
I think objectively, it fits the best, despite the fact that it puts three commissioner districts outside of the plus or minus 10% rule, and it's the furthest from the average per commissioner district. But if you weigh all of them together, it does force, at least the matrix that I prepared and presented, it, it's the best numeric objection, objective, objective, and I believe defendable. That said, it, in full disclosure, it may have the appearance of enriching District Three, which I represent, so...
That's just the way it happens to turn out. I will concur, that's why I was happy that Commissioner, County Attorney Metz mentioned that equal population is not the most deciding factor. Here we have a case where we're not numerically equal, but if we're equal in interests and representation, I think that kind of overrides the numerical number that puts us not equal that way. I think it's a plan that would be, that you could defend, defendable plan. So I think, if nobody else has any comments, what about the staggered terms and/or the soil and water conservation districts? Is there a separate motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that you, you vote on this first. Plan, because I think to some degree that those could be attached to the terms.
Okay. Any final discussion? We have a motion made and seconded, all in favor of Plan A, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Did I hear an aye?
Yes.
Who opposed?
I did.
Okay. Uh, sorry. Motion carries. With that, is there thoughts on soil and water conservation? My general thought on that was, it makes sense, the plan that was submitted by SWCD, because it puts the watersheds on our end of the county. We have Riley, Purgatory, Bluff Creek watershed, it keeps them together in one district, and the other watersheds are, and it's recommended by people that basically represent the soil and water. So that's why I would go along with the plan that was recommended to us by the SWCD.
I would make the motion to accept their recommendation with option A.
Motion made and seconded.
Mr. Chair, maybe just a friendly change to that. We're looking for a direction to staff to prepare facts and findings.
I would...
Okay. The motion would be to prepare, motion was, it would be to have staff prepare facts and findings supporting option A for the soil and water. Any other, any discussion? All in favor of that?
Can I, sorry to interrupt you, I apologize.
No.
This is important, too, for the board at this stage to explain why you're choosing that as well, or rejecting any other ones. So kind of consistent with what you did with the other one, rather than waiting for the vote.
Okay, I think it's easy to support what we were presented because of the watershed's continuity. It's hard to explain why we rejected anything else. I'll be perfectly honest, I haven't seen anything else in the Water District.
Oh, Mr. Chair, again, that, one of the big variables is, is trying to align with their own watershed districts. So if you agree with that, I'd like to hear.
Mr. Chair, yes. I was going to make that comment, I think that the soil and water individuals who pass their own resolution 2022-0401, with that recommendation, they really understand the watershed shed issues, and I think the compactness is a factor, the community of interest is a factor, but for me, it's the watershed districts. And you'll just see that slight variation then with Shen has in District Five, and how that comes into play, and that's because of that watershed, watershed district.
Any other thoughts on the, the motion? Seeing none?
Do you need to hear from, do you need to hear from all of us, or?
No, I mean, I'm just, for us to draft findings and to be supported, there should be some reasons, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
I would agree with everything that's been said.
And I think we can use the rationale that the SWCD provided us when they provided us with this plan. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion for option to have staff present the rationale explaining why we want to go with Option A? We're wording on that, but, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll have staff draw that. And finally, the staggered terms for our commissioner districts. It makes it a little bit easier, shouldn't say easier, with Plan A. I think the, I think we have to decide who is going to run in 2024, and by default, with Plan A, Commissioner District Three will be on the ballot in 2024. And I would put District One also on the ballot in 2024. The rationale being that that's my position, and I was elected two years ago for a four-year term, and it makes sense, in two years, I'll have that four-year term up. So that would put Commissioner Districts Two, Four, and Five would be on the ballot in 2026.
Is that a motion, sir?
I would make that a motion.
Is that to direct staff?
To put up the fact and find.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made by myself, second by Commissioner Workman. Discussion?
If I can, if they need, I think you explained it very well, Commissioner Udoman, Commissioner District Three will be on the ballot, and...
Commissioner District One will also be on.
You're saying, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Commissioner District One would be in '24, not '26?
Would be in '24, right.
So you would be, the district you represent would be on the ballot three consecutive ballots?
Correct. Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. With that, I think we're up to a point where we can...
Motion to recess.
Or a second to that motion.
Second, Udoman.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman, to recess and have staff draw up some findings. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and we are in recess.
Give us probably 15 minutes, we'll go to, we'll go to my office and jump on the computer.
Is this a Commissioner 15 minutes, or is this?
It's not a Workman 15 minutes.
That's an hour.
Well, either way, some of us would have to be on the ballot three years in a row anyway.
Not necessarily. Does Tom and Tim, they're up automatically this year?
Yep.
They'll go two consecutive, but JP, if he would have, if the motion would have been, he would have been three in a row.
I would have been three in a row.
Stay with the same rotation.
Yeah.
What it works out is it's either a four, four, and two, or...
Yeah.
Right, right. Right, right.
Do we need a motion to reconvene?
I think so.
We'll reconvene this meeting with the staff's findings and facts. So the first we have in front of us is adopting a resolution. We need a motion to adopt the resolution of Carver County Commissioner's redistricting plan, option A.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, or second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the findings of facts and the resolution associated with the redistricting of Carver County 2022 Plan A? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have to adopt a resolution determining commissioner district terms. Is there a motion to do the district terms?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Urdeman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Adopting the resolution for either a two-year or a four-year term for commissioner districts on the 2022 ballot. We have it in front of you. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And finally, we need a motion to adopt the resolution adopting Carver County Soil and Water Redistricting Plan. Move approval. Motion by Commissioner Urdeman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion on that? Soil and Water Redistricting Plan for 2022. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen. With that, we come to our administrator's report. Mr. Hamsin.
Nothing to report. Moving into work session.
Okay, and with that, we are going to go into a work session discussing projects and funding requests from both Love Inc. and the outpost.
Mr. Chair, do we adjourn?
Not yet. Now, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lynch.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Urdeman to adjourn. There is no discussion on that motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good job Kendra and staff.